Chair Street.
President.
Co-Chair Nichols. Secretary Demick, present. Commissioner Aubrey.
Present.
Commissioner Blackstock.
Here.
Commissioner Hope.
Here.
Trustee Klein.
Here.
Okay, everybody's here. Approval of the minutes from March 11th. Get a chance to look over the minutes in your packet. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? The minutes are accepted. And you can sign your copy of them. Maybe it's the one in the book. Got it. All read. Approval of the minutes. If there were any public comments, unless, other than, these are the folks that are here for the, those two items. So I don't s-. Hi. So I was asking if there was any public comments to be made. If not, we can proceed with the business. The public hearing was next, next on the agenda. There is none but the unfinished business. We were going to do a zoning ordinance workshop first, but, uh, let's move that out. Let's do the site plan extension for Mid River first and get you guys out of the way.
Right. I'm Greg Baker Zach.
You want to, you have to adjust the agenda, right?
Pardon?
You're going to adjust your agenda first?
Make a motion. Opposed? We need a motion to adjust it?
Yeah, and I think you were going to put like one in front of the workshop, right?
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we, um, change the order or the, the agenda and move the workshop down after the new business. Do I have a second on that?
Support.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Now we can go on.
Greg Baker Zach representing, uh, the river. Here to request a site plan, um, extension. With. Plus having to get a new, well, not a new, uh, engineer, but the people that were working on it with our engineer had left their office. I'll bring them up to speed. Your, uh, your new engineer up to speed. We're still in the permitting process with Eagle, so, um, it's not going as swift as we thought. Request an, an extension there. For site plan.
Okay, what, and is, was, was it originally a year, Cindy? That it was good for? Okay. How much extension do you think you need?
Another year.
Another year.
Right now, Eagle water permits are anywhere from six to eight months. So, um, by the time we're in the review process with your new engineer, we get that and submit it this summer. It could be winter time or early spring before winter back.
Any discussion commissioners? Negative?
I understand there, there's township.
Down this way. And George, you all set with?
I was just wondering, requesting the extension, does that change any of the cost?
From the construction standpoint or permit standpoint?
Right, and ultimately to the township. We're approving an extension of a year. Is there a negative aspect of that?
I don't think so. Cindy, do you, can you think of any negative consequences? No, I think the-
The, the costs could fluctuate. It would really be borne by the developer if the construction cost happens to be different.
Yeah.
Six months from now than when you originally expected it.
Yeah.
Six months prior.
Totally.
But as far as the cost to the township, I, I, I don't, I would see it as negligent.
Yeah. It seems to me the reason for putting a time limit on it is so people don't start a project and then just let it sit there half finished.
Correct.
And so, you know, and, and obviously you're, you're working towards the permitting stage on it, so, okay.
I'll make a motion, we, um, extend it for another year.
Okay, support?
I'll support it.
Herb, support it? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, you got it?
Thank you.
So next, we're going to do the new business, considering additional allowable uses for the medical campus zoning district. Who's going to make that? Yep?
Yeah, I think you're all understanding. Kind of, that's okay.
Whoever wants to talk.
Yeah. Want to use this book right now, son?
Sure.
My name's Anthony Rubino. I'm here on behalf of the owner of the building at four zero one four North River Road. C and G really, uh, I'm sorry, based on holdings is the owner of the building. We were hired to market this building for sale or for lease back in March of 2024. So the building's been on the market now 15 months, give or take. We were able to come to terms with, um, you have to give me your business name again, I'm sorry.
River View Veterinary Center.
River View Veterinary and Center. We were able to come to an understanding from a financial perspective. And during their due diligence period, we noticed that veterinary services is not allowed within the current zoning, which is MC Medical Campus. We are here requesting that the council entertain, um, the idea of allowing veterinarian services within the MC zoning. Just a little bit about the building. This is a freestanding, roughly 4,300 square foot building. It is a part of an association within that complex. If you're familiar with the complex, it's a medical complex. The association has approved the use, so the surrounding buildings, um, are okay with the use. We did do a Google overview just to kind of see what type of neighbors that could potentially be affected by this zoning. And the closest residence is 381 feet from this building, so it's quite a bit away. And that is separated by a road. Again, it's freestanding, so anything they're doing within the building wouldn't impact adjacent tenants or adjacent occupants. And I'll let, I'll let these individuals speak a little bit about the business held inside of the building and what their day-to-day operations are. But as far as the real estate goes, that's the, the overview of, of, of what we're currently offering. Is there any questions in regards?
Can, uh, can you tell me, is it on the north side of that hospital or the, the building's along the south side?
It's on the north side.
It's in the complex.
It's actually, it-
Doctors part, yeah, Puddy Duck.
Yeah.
It's the corner one, right?
Yeah, it's the corner one closest to Puddy Duck.
Okay, thank you.
Um, it's that freestanding building there that runs North River Road.
Yeah, so, um, one of our, uh, main concerns with current zoning and trying to get a variance or special use is if we just get a variance to rezone this parcel, general business. Currently, there are some stipulations in your zoning regarding veterinary business specifically. Also, apologies for my voice. That veterinary businesses, adjacent parcels have to be zoned a specific way. Industrial, local business, few other specific, um, things that would not apply to this parcel. So it still wouldn't work if we just have rezone general business. I know one of the main concerns with veterinary clinics generally is the noise associated with dogs barking. And as we already kind of mentioned, there's a pretty good amount of space between us and any residential as well as the neighboring buildings. And the association has already approved our use. Typically speaking, for our type of business, we're not a 24-hour hospital. So we don't typically have patients staying overnight for the most part. Any noise situations we may be dealing with is to register in business hours in the day. Those patients will call five or six in the evening. So that's, I know that's one of the main things that are generally a concern with veterinary clinics.
Head more.
We also, yeah, that-
Is this one?
Yep.
This one right here?
Yep.
At the corner?
We also, in our business, don't do any boarding, daycare, anything along those lines. So we typically also don't have animals, um, outside for run for any period of time. If we ever have to take a patient outside, they're always leashed. And with this facility, we have talked about the possibility of putting up fencing. So we have a closed area if we do need to take patients outside. Just trying to mitigate any risks with animals there. So I'm assuming that's kind of the big concerns with those, but ours is, is making sure whatever, if we do have any zoning variance or anything to reform here is making sure we're still in legal use of this building, that we don't have issues with this in the future, um, after we purchase it if we do. But we very much like the opportunity to bring our services to East China. We have a lot of clients that already live in this township, so.
And I would just like to add that, um, we've, we've been in our current building in St. Clair for 13 years. Our nearest neighbors there are 40 feet away. And in 13 years, we've never had a noise complaint, we've never had a complaint about dogs being outside, messes in the yard, anything. So we, we've kind of proven ourselves in town to be good neighbors and to respect our neighbors. So I don't think the township needs to have any concern in that respect.
Questions about our business or what we're doing to mitigate?
Is it a seven-day-a-week operation or is it just, uh?
It's five to six days a week. Right now, we only do one Saturday a month and then we're open Monday to Friday every week.
Are you going to be offering emergency calls?
We do urgent visits only during business hours. So nothing after five or six PM, depending on what time of the day we call.
So nothing scheduled for emergency calls on the weekends or anything?
Right, yeah, only during business hours.
Okay. I'm just thinking of how we could make it general enough so that if, if we may make a rule, then, you know, either sometime in the future you may leave and somebody else may want to come in, or somebody else may, if it says, okay, anywhere on the medical campus you can do this, you, you know, somebody else may want to take advantage of it. So, um, I'm trying to vision how we would handle that.
Yeah.
Your particular business, I, I, you know.
You're familiar?
Familiar with, yes. And I can see how that would work there. Does anybody else have any other questions on?
No, I, I, well, the other question I have, so what we have in our packet is what you're recommending is the process to go about if we decide to make this change?
Well, that is just the process. So what you're tasked with is-
So this could take months?
It would, it would take.
Another, a question I have, and we've done this in the township, is a conditional rezoning, an appropriate response to this?
We talked about this, that it's a condominium parcel, so it would be the entire condominium parcel. And it doesn't qualify because of what the things that they mentioned that are adjacent that don't qualify for rezoning.
Yeah, there's specific language in the commercial and in, commercial district where veterinary clinics are allowed. That says it can't have a border with any residential district, or it can only have a border with another industrial or commercial district. And so even a rezoning to a business district.
But not-
Even conditional rezoning, it would be tough because you can't, you can't delete provisions of the zoning ordinance. So they would have to get a rezoning and then ask for a variance, I suppose, from that. You can't have a property that borders another, or the property can only border another industrial property or something like that. So that's the problem because we would conditionally rezone one of those pieces that's in purple. And then everything around it would still be purple, medical campus. And the ordinance says the surrounding adjacent property lines all have to be other commercial or industrial properties, not medical campus. So that's kind of the challenge.
Because I know we've done it in the past. And that individual did not meet all of those requirements. We've done it at the north end of the business that-
So-
Bordered a residential district.
And, and I wonder, you know, I, I guess I can imagine why that language might be in there. I think probably it's referring to outdoor activities, dog runs and that kind of a thing.
Yeah.
And proximity to a residential district, but the language is odd that it wouldn't allow it adjacent to a medical campus district, which is a commercial or a non-residential district. So what you may want to consider is amending the text of the ordinance to, you could add it to the medical campus district. That's kind of the suggestion, at least, that we're offering to you as an allowable use in the medical campus district. You could also go back in and, and update the veterinary clinic conditions in your business district to say that it, it, the adjacent properties may be medical campus or another commercial district or an industrial district.
That's still, across the road is still residential, right?
Yeah, I think it said that all property, all adjacent properties have to be medical campus. So I guess you could make an argument that across the street would be residential, so that might be the, you know, it might kill it right there.
Yeah.
So, again, going back to the thought is that if you could consider changing the text of the medical campus district to allow veterinary hospitals and clinics, and not have that condition that, of the adjacent property.
And somehow restrict the veterinary clinic uses to something more in line with what River View does, not a full-blown hospital and-
You could have other restrictions.
Yeah, I think you would need some additional restriction, not, not just say veterinary uses. Because then you could get a lot larger, uh, practice with outdoor runs and boarding and everything else.
That's my concern. I don't have an issue with what they do in the building.
Yeah.
It's just if we, if we allow this type of use in that district, then what's to stop somebody from putting in 7,000 square foot fenced-in area and start keeping dogs overnight?
Right. And that's the biggest concern with the veterinary clinic.
Yeah.
And so you could allow it in the MC with the condition, so it could be a conditional use. And one of the conditions is, um, outdoor activities, dog runs are not, are not permissible.
Yeah.
Sounds like that would be okay and it would still work.
And we need it worked properly because they do have to take the dogs out to potty or something, you know?
Correct, yeah.
It, it is-
Understand that, that-
They're not just outside all the time running, but they, they do need to go outside occasionally.
Correct. But in terms of a, a formal dog run, outdoor dog area.
Yeah.
It's no different than someone bringing their dog to the hospital. They're going to let it out and go into the house.
So you're talking about like kennelling the dogs outside, basically?
Right, yeah, so, yeah, no kenneling, no outdoor dog run would be-
Yeah.
Conditions that you, you would want to consider.
So then if we do that, then are we, are we back to the timeline now? How fast could that happen?
Well, uh, state, state law requires you to hold a public hearing on the proposed text change.
Yeah.
So in theory, you could tonight suggest that your next planning commission meeting or a special meeting, but let's assume at the next planning commission meeting, you would hold a public hearing on the proposed text change.
Okay.
Once that's done, they could then submit their plans to you as soon as possible. And as long as, um, there's a little bit, it, it goes from you as a recommendation to the township board.
Yeah.
So there's another couple of weeks there. And then the township board, once adopted, would have to publish a notice of adoption and then it becomes effective within seven days after adoption.
Okay.
So while that process is going on, they could be preparing their plans, kind of at their own risk because there's no guarantee, even if you recommend that town, that the township board would adopt. But they could start at least preparing their paperwork for a submittal back to you so that you can see the site plan.
Okay. What do you think?
Have you guys been to the township board?
Yes.
That's where we started.
Because it's, it's thrown back to us, right?
Yeah.
Hot potato, hot potato. Well, the township board did it because it has to go through the planning commission first.
So they're already aware of it.
Okay.
I'm sorry, sir, if you wouldn't mind, can you just explain that one more time, that timeline, so, so I understand it? I followed you, but I'm not sure I followed the timeline.
So if the planning commission decided to move forward to amend the text of the MC district, you would need to hold a public hearing.
So we would, we would do that?
You would schedule a public hearing.
We would determine what the text is like tonight?
You don't necessarily have to do that. You can direct, um, your administration to say, give us language, adding it to the MC district with the conditions that we discussed. No outdoor dog runs, no kenneling.
Okay, and?
And we could provide that language.
In time for a-
In time to send the notice out to the newspaper, have the public hearing and all that.
Okay.
And schedule the public hearing at your next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that would be the second Tuesday in June?
Okay.
And then the public hearing would be held that evening. After the public hearing is closed, you could make a recommendation to the township board to adopt.
Right.
How fast between the planning commission and the township board?
The planning, the next board meeting is the second Monday in June. And then they have to have another reading.
So it's two readings at the township board level, so they require two readings. So the first reading could be the second. Yeah, it could be later in June and the second reading would be the first meeting in, in July.
And then-
Potentially, you could have a township board adoption by July. And then you would need to send a notice to the newspaper, uh, announcing that the amendment has passed. And then the amendment normally, unless your charter says something different, is, it becomes effective seven days after publication.
Okay, so mid-July?
Yeah, end of July at the late, at the earliest would be when the amendment would take effect.
Yeah.
But you, you could start preparing your paperwork, taking a risk, knowing that there's not a guarantee that the township board ultimately would adopt it. But you can be ready to submit your paperwork as soon as possible.
What, what type of paperwork?
So this is in an existing building. Probably we'd want to talk to, um, Tracy, the building official, to confirm that. While, while the planning commission is doing their thing, probably we'll check with the building official and he can walk you through the process further in terms of what paperwork you would need to submit.
And is that like interior construction plans, interior layout?
I, I don't know, I don't know what triggers site plan review full in front of the planning commission versus what is eligible for an administrative review.
Ask our architects. If you, if you remodel a building, do you have to go to site plan?
I would say normally not.
Normally not, yeah.
No.
So, so it, it would be a plot plan probably of the site, floor plans of the unit, architectural, if you're doing interior improvements.
Yeah.
Kind of in advance of the, a building permit submittal.
Yeah. And that's not necessarily approval of the use, it's more so approval of?
It would be approval of the use, so that maybe could be done administratively since it's a new use in an existing building.
Okay.
By the building official, but he would walk you through both the use approval and the building plans, uh, for the interior space.
Yeah, that's, that assumes that the zoning is already taken care of and that's not an issue now, it's just the plain building use.
We're running that risk of doing it.
Right.
While the potential could be that they-
But essentially, you could be ready and, and the building official would be aware that the week after it's become effective, that you'd be submitting your paperwork and everything could be in order.
Yeah.
Ready for him to approve.
Thank you.
So.
So if you wanted to move forward, you would make a motion.
Yeah.
Setting a public hearing and directing us to prepare the language, as you discussed.
So what do we think? Everybody, uh?
I think it's a doable fit.
Okay, let's do it.
It's still medical-based, it's just for animals. As long as there's verbiage, there's no outdoor storage of animals, no runs, anything like that.
And you've got an approval from the association in writing? You've got-
Yeah, I, I don't have it here with me, but we could provide that to them to submit upon their, you know, plan review at one of the planning meetings.
All right. Let's make a motion. Who wants to speak it out?
I'll make a motion that we allow the use. We ask our administration to start preparing the language to limit it to indoor activities only for this use with minimal outdoor as needed, but no storage of animals outdoors, no dog runs, no kenneling, nothing of that nature that would be a detriment to that complex.
And to schedule a public hearing.
And schedule a public hearing. Okay.
Second.
Larry seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Nick Hunt does the next step.
I've worked with a lot of municipalities. This is a very good one.
We appreciate your patience.
It helps when you have a couple of architects on the, on the other side a lot of times.
Other places and it's such a difficult, it's not done like a field service. This guy needs another year. Sometimes it just takes so long. Just that forever.
Okay.
All right.
Now we're back to the zoning ordinance review community workshop, and our community has left us, so we're working by ourselves.
So we kind of mentioned this the last time, that, um, the grant, uh, wants us to do, to reach out to the public, make sure that the public can be involved. So we did post this meeting, um, for the general public to be here, to attend, to listen in, to share any feedback that they might have. This presentation was directed mostly at the public in case we did have some folks who are interested here. So I will skip through, since I prepared it, might as well show it to you, but we'll skip through really quickly. Because you are aware, we've talked, we talked about it at the last time, uh, that I was up, about this project here and what we're up to. As you know, we're looking at potential zoning ordinance amendments with an emphasis on housing. And the amendments follow the, the recommendations that are coming out of the master plan that was adopted in October. We, we kind of talked about this, and this is also generally known, but it's worth kind of acknowledging why, why this grant program was put into place by the state legislature and why we're considering housing and whether we appropriately allow and regulate housing. Because we know that the housing market has changed and is changing. We are, from a demographic or generational perspective, um, the township is an aging community. We have, as people age, maybe their needs are different. I know if I'm, you know, not able to take care of my five acres, um, that maybe I'd be looking at downsizing. And I'm, in a couple of years, I'll be an empty nester, and so I don't need all the bedrooms in my house and that kind of a thing. So people, as we age, we have different needs. Certainly, if you have, you know, medical needs and things of that nature, as you age, you have, you know, you might need accessible housing units. You would need senior care facilities. So why, why do we care about housing? Specifically related to the question of housing affordability, we want to, obviously, we're not, we, we, the East China Township Planning Commission cannot direct to the housing market and we cannot change the housing market. But we can maybe do small things, incremental things as a municipality. We can eliminate barriers. We can maybe look at some, some things that we can do locally that might have a, a small incremental impact on housing affordability. But we do that because people need housing, especially young people are struggling in many cases to find housing. Some people are struggling with the costs of housing, higher taxes, um, higher costs, maintenance and things of that nature. And so we want to make sure that people have a safe, quality and affordable place to live as best we can. And there's quality of life issues and impacts as well. If you have people in the community who can't afford their housing unit, that means they're spending too much of their money on housing and then that means that they're not able to dedicate time and resources elsewhere, like to, you know, contributing to the community or upkeeping their property. You know, maybe they have just enough money to fix that roof, not enough money to, you know, clean up the rest of their property, kind of a thing, so. And this is just kind of a reminder of who we're planning for. Obviously, we need to take care of our current population, but as a planning commission in particular, we're looking at future generations as well. Just some, some trends that kind of highlight some of the conditions going on, both national trends and local trends. This chart just shows housing supply, all, you know, up through the 2000, all the way through 2005, really, in terms of the number of new housing units in Michigan. And then I think the one in the top right is new housing units nationally. And you could see the, you know, the bubble of 2008, 2009, 2010 really cut it back. But even in, although we've had improvement, right? It still is nowhere near the levels of new housing construction that we had pre-2005, 2006. So that just kind of highlights that although the market has done, the housing market has rebounded, not to the level, at least of new construction, is where we had it previously. This one is just kind of a real simple one that shows in green, uh, median housing prices and in blue, median incomes, household incomes. And so the gap between household incomes and median, and house, house values is increasing. What, what affects housing affordability from our perspective tonight, zoning, is one of the things that affects, can have a, a minor modest impact on housing affordability. But we can, for example, by, if we require our, a six-month site plan review process versus a two-month site plan review process, time is money. time is money on the part of the developer. If we have barriers in our zoning code, if we have regulations that aren't right-sized for our community, then if we require too many parking spaces, then that has a direct impact on the cost of a potential housing development. Just some charts here for East China Township, so local trends, the one, the chart on the left shows the median housing values from 2011 to 2023. So it dipped a little bit, but now is, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The median age is on the left, so that's our median age over time. The chart on the right is total population, so we do see that the population has declined in the last 10, 12 years. It looks bad, it's only 200 people over that time span, the actual numbers. But this chart shows that the average number of people living within each household has also declined. So even if you are a stagnant or somewhat declining population, if you have a fewer number of people living within each household, you still may need more housing units. So an easy example is, you know, my, when I become, my wife and I are empty nesters soon, I'll have, soon we'll have children who are going to need their own home. And so our household went from four to two, and now we have two homes needed, you know, where we previously had one. Or maybe a divorce is an easy example where, you know, you want, previously you had one home for that household, now you need two homes for that household. This chart shows, East China Township is the darker line on top, this is the median housing value from 2014 to 2023. So your housing values are increasing, which is a good thing, right? But it does have that potential impact of the affordability issue. And that line is in comparison to St. Clair County and Michigan, which are a little bit below you in terms of median housing values. So it's a positive thing that you have a desirable community, good quality housing and high-value housing. But that does have the impact of the affordability issue. The Census Bureau does catalog households that are cost burdened. So the rule of thumb or the definition for being cost burdened is if you pay more than 30% in your mortgage and insurance and utility costs, or if you pay more than 30% of your rental costs, more than 30% of your household income, then you're cost burdened. So that's kind of the rule of thumb there. And so according to this data, you did have a handful, a fair number of cost burdened households within the township. And so it's not a significant number, but we still want to do what we can for those cost burdened persons or households in our community. And then factors influencing the housing market, first, what do we have in place right now? That pie chart shows the current types of housing units in your community. The dark, the majority, is single-family detached homes. But you do have a fair number of some multifamily units, 250, according to the American Community Survey from the Census Bureau in 2023. A few townhomes, a few duplexes, 10, according to this, triplexes or quadplexes in the community and seven mobile home units in the community. But you can see mostly it's single-family detached homes is what we have in place today. And then what's being considered, so I'll just kind of close the presentation at that point and share with you the latest draft of amendments. So for your convenience, we've highlighted in yellow the new amendment since the previous version. So the last version that I presented to you was dated March, early March, that we presented at your March Planning Commission meeting. So this version is dated May 9. There isn't too much that's new in here, but I wanted to highlight a few things. First, I printed this after I realized on page 10, no, not page 10, page 14. So if you remember, one of the big things that we talked about two months ago was the idea of accessory dwelling units. And you had decided as a planning commission that the timing is not right for us right now. You didn't see a significant number of inquiries about it, didn't see a demand for it, so we'll kick the can down the road. If it becomes an issue, we want to address it later, five years from now, 10 years from now, we can always do that. But I failed to strike accessory dwelling units, we don't need that definition on page 14, so that'll be one change. The next new change here is on page 36. So we are proposing within the R1, R2 and R3 districts as a conditional use to allow two-family dwellings. The one thing that we, that it was asked that we should be careful of is that we want to make sure, we don't want any current single-family homes being converted to a two-family dwelling. We only, in this context, we're in the R1, R2 or R3 districts, we're only looking for new construction of duplexes. And so we added that language, conversions of existing single-family dwellings to two-family dwellings shall not be allowed. And that is for the R1, R2 and R3 district. If it's owned multifamily, that's okay, but for these districts, no conversions. The second addition, again, back to accessory dwelling units, we decided we're not ready for that, so I'm just striking that language on page 36. It continues on to page 37. The next change is on page 38. We had evaluated adult foster care facilities. And one of the concerns that we had is that adult foster care, there's adult foster care family homes, that's six or less, then there's adult foster care small group homes, which is seven to 12, and then there's adult foster care large group homes, which is 13 to 20. We had said we don't want the 13 to 20, the capacity for 13 to 20 is too much for a residential, single-family district. So here, for the R1, R2 and R3, we're striking out the allowance for the adult foster care large group home. That would only be allowed in the multiple-family district. All right, the next yellow is on page 45. So here we're in the multiple-family residential districts, RM1 and RM2. So the two-family dwellings, comma, site-built. I believe that that reference is a reference that even in the R1 and RM1 and RM2 districts, that you couldn't convert an existing single-family home to a multi-unit structure by adding that term "site-built." It seems to me that that's what that means, is that it has to be built on the site, kind of a thing, like a new two-family dwelling. As we said, we're good with that for R1, R2 and R3, but I think here in the multiple-family district, we don't need to have that restriction, in my mind. And so that's the reason for that strikeout at that location.
How could you get a two-family dwelling that isn't site-built?
Well, that language was odd to me and I, since it's unclear, I think you could make, somebody could make an argument that, you know, it's got to be new construction, kind of a thing.
Yeah, okay.
We don't need to say "site-built," we can just simply say "two-family dwellings."
Yeah, that makes sense.
The next change is on page 47. Since we were considering allowing accessory dwelling units in the R, the single-family districts, we also would have allowed them in the RM1 and RM2, we're just going to strike that out. I think we have to go a ways until the next one. Yes, all the way to page 66. So this is the medical campus district, we were just talking about that. We had said, or I had a note from the last meeting, that multiple-family dwellings on the second floor and above, we could consider having that in the MC district as well. We were going to add that to the LB, the local business, and the GB, general business districts. So if there is a mixed-use building that has ground floor office, maybe in the case of the medical campus district, this would say that they could have an apartment unit or some lofts on the upper floors, even in the medical campus district. Did I get that right? I had that note, I had it written down for some reason, so we must have talked about it.
I remember talking about it. We talked about it, you know, maybe nursing staff or doctor's staff would want an apartment.
Yes, that's right, that's right.
I don't know if the general public would want to live next to, in a hospital campus, but?
But if you worked there, I could see that for sure, yeah, okay. The next new addition. Okay, starts on page 115 here. So this is your site plan review section. So we didn't talk about this two months ago, other than I told you that one of the things I still wanted to do yet was look through your review procedures sections to make sure that you're not unnecessarily, you don't have hurdles or you're not, you know, requiring three meetings for a site plan review, which I knew, of course, you didn't do. But anyway, I wanted to look at this section and just maybe identify some things that you could consider. The first thing is that under subsection A within your site plan review section, this section talks about when a site plan is required or what type of project triggers site plan review and specifically which types of projects are eligible for administrative review and approval by the building official, meaning they wouldn't have to come before you, the planning commission. So I think probably the standard practice of your building official maybe is different than how the zoning ordinance actually currently reflects it, that may be the case. And in this case, I would suggest that you bring your zoning ordinance to be consistent with the current practice or policy of the building official. Your ordinance kind of is silent on, for example, does a small addition to an existing building require, trigger full site plan review in front of the planning commission? Or the ordinance is silent on whether a new use within an existing building needs to come before the planning commission. I think it's reasonable that your building official processes those administratively right now, but we're just kind of putting it on the books to reflect that. So small projects such as expansion or addition of 500 square feet or less to an existing conforming structure doesn't have to come before you. A new use or change of use within an existing building, but importantly, where the new use does not increase the need for parking at the site by more than 10%. So maybe it requires a couple new parking spaces because sometimes, like a restaurant use needs more parking than a retail. So your building official should be looking at, okay, this is a restaurant, it's replacing a retail, is there enough parking in the shopping center as a whole to accommodate the new restaurant use? And if there is enough parking, or they only need to add one or two more spaces that isn't more than 10% of the current parking lot, then yeah, let's treat it administratively. That type of provision is pretty standard for administrative review eligible. Additionally, item G would be just an alteration to the parking lot. Maybe there's no change of use or new use or anything like that, the applicant or the owner just wants to add a couple of more parking spaces or tweak the layout of the maneuvering, you know, aisles and whatnot to the parking area. So that would be administrative eligible. And then finally, small site changes, moving some trees around, adding a new, you know, fence or something like that, installation of new lighting, screening and trash receptacles and enclosures. It wouldn't trigger the need to come before the planning commission. So your building officials handling those requests essentially as it is and we're just kind of, and the ordinance is silent on that right now. So we want to just make sure that it meets your practice currently. Does that make sense? Any questions about that?
Well, that makes sense.
So again, in the site plan review section, item B here, your current language says that "no site plan shall be approved until same has been reviewed by the township planner and a township engineer to ensure compliance with the standards of the respective departments." That, I don't, that doesn't match your practice presently. Right now, I think the township chooses which projects they want to send to the township planner or the township engineer prior to appearing before the planning commission. Like the Mid River condo, right? I reviewed that as your township planner and I know your township engineer reviewed that project and gave you comments as it appeared before you, Dollar General, as I recall. But maybe there are some things that, you know, you don't feel that you need the planner or engineer to weigh in on. So let's not force the township to do that. The township can choose to do that. Item C here, so this, these are the standards that you have as a planning commission when you review a site plan. So what standard do you evaluate the site plan based on? So it's, yeah, is it traffic circulation, the location of driveways, safety and convenience of the site, landscaping and fences, that kind of a thing, to make sure that there's compatibility. But this first one here that's listed, one-family residential development on the basis of a subdivision. I've seen that language in 100 zoning ordinances, I don't understand what it means.
Good, neither do I.
So let's just get rid of it, it's unnecessary.
Okay.
Do our architects understand what that means?
The only interpretation I've ever taken is that there's confusion between I'm building my own house here on a single-family lot, or I'm a developer and it's a subdivision, that's my interpretation, and it's a single-family development, but a subdivision, not an individual lot. That's the way I've always, because I agree, I've seen that. All of these are copy-paste, I've seen it a thousand times, that's always been my interpretation, it's a subdivision, it's going to planning commission.
And you have subdivision requirements and regulations, so I would say, which need to be followed, so I don't really see a reason to have that here. Okay. Under subsection E, this is like the information that needs to be included, no, I'm sorry, this is the number of copies that need to be provided. The one thing I did want to ask is, it's asking for 11 copies, is, do you ask for 11 copies?
We do.
You do, okay. Do you want to ask, continue to ask for 11 copies?
We always have extra.
You always have extra.
Tracy reviews everything electronically now. And I believe our engineers and planners?
I do, I bet your engineer does as well.
I mean, this board probably needs it because most people don't have a large format plotter.
So could you get away with eight copies, seven for the planning commission members and one for the five? So what you could do, you could do a couple of things, you could change that language to say eight copies or you could modify it to say, "a sufficient number of copies as determined by the township shall be submitted." And that allows you to, one year from now, if you all get? The township provides you with laptops. That would be even better for flexibility. Does that make sense?
And really, when we get them all plotted out, we can't all look at them at this desk anyways.
That's true, you're folding it out.
We end up opening one or two sets and all just gather. We end up opening one or two sets and all just gather around, so...
So how about I say, "a sufficient number of copies, as determined by the township, shall be submitted."
We don't wanna still ask for reproducible vellums?
Yeah, so, yeah. Can you believe it? And one reproducible transparency shall be provided. Obviously, we don't do that, we don't require that.
Done tablet and chisel.
One PDF file.
Okay.
I've gone to communities now, they're asking for just two copies and a PDF.
Yeah, yeah.
They're friends now.
Yeah, especially if the planning commissioners maybe, you know, each bring a laptop or something like that.
Or have one set for the meetings and everybody else...
Yeah, or you put it up on screen, you know, yeah, so. So there's other oddities like that throughout, so on the next page, page one-seventeen, again, where, for the property survey, on a separate drawing, the property survey shall be submitted in eleven legible copies, one of which shall be clearly reproducible film transparency. So that's unnecessary language. Your topographic survey requirement, it just seems overly complicated to me, especially when you look, if you just flip ahead to page one-eighteen, where it has this crazy language to determine how far beyond the site should the topo survey extend. Most of the time now, you just kinda see, just general language, the topo survey needs to be maximum contour interval of two feet, prepared by a registered professional. And then, the items, you know, two, one, two, three, four, I mean, those are fine, that indicates what site conditions need to be shown on the plan. But, it just seems like we could do a little cleanup here. And, you know, as far as like, like I said, requiring a contour interval of even one foot or less, which is on page one-eighteen there, where depending on the scale of the, or the rate of slope of surface, you know, so you have to determine what the maximum slope is, to determine whether you need to, the topo survey has to be done in one-foot contours versus two-foot. So as I said, this is just beyond what you normally see in terms of site plan review before a planning commission. So the bottom line is, hey, let's give us a contour interval of two, and two feet, essentially.
Okay, and this is all just for those things that need a site plan review?
Correct.
So if it's a one residential...
Correct.
You don't need a site plan review, so you don't need that.
A single-family home does not need site plan review. Those minor projects that we were just talking about don't need site plan review. I'm sure your building official would require a plot plan, a hand sketch, you know, that kind of a thing, that proves that they meet the zoning requirements, but a topo survey, no. That kind of, no. Continuing on, so subsection G talks about some of the things that need to be included on a preliminary site plan, because your ordinance specifies that there is a two-stage site plan review process. Preliminary site plan review, followed by final site plan review. But, your ordinance gives the applicant the ability to merge the two phases in one. So at the discretion of the applicant, site plans may be submitted for review in a two-step process, preliminary and final. So that means, or they could just go straight to final. So the reason why you have that two-stage process is, sometimes, the developer may want some level of assurance that what they're proposing to you is going to generally work, before they put in all the details and all the work, stormwater calculations and everything like that. Sometimes, the developer is like, "we've got the money to do it, we've got the engineers on board, we do this all the time, we just want a quicker review process, so we're gonna submit one final with all the details at one time." I think that's good, I think the way that you do it is fine. So I don't see any issue with, like, getting rid of the two-step process, or giving flexibility to a property owner in choosing whether they wanna submit for the final, or to go through that two-step process.
I think we charge a fee again for the second, if they go to two-step, the second step, they still get charged for another engineering review, so...
Sure, yeah. So that's maybe a reason why, if they're confident in, you know, that they're, they know what they're doing, maybe they could save some money and time.
It's not a whole lot of money, probably more time, yep.
But, for this preliminary site plan, what information needs to be included on that? Back to page one-nineteen. You're asking for, not just a statement of the acreage of the property, but the acreage of the existing and proposed public or dedicated private streets and each land use type, the acreage, the total area falling within sub-sequius, I don't know how to pronounce that, swampy or submerged bottom land of lakes or streams, though this is just beyond what's needed. And there's no flexibility given, so just give us the total acreage of the property at preliminary review stage. There's a lot of references to dimensioning systems. Again, like under, on page one-twenty, we tell them, yeah, you have to show us the location of structures, including their dimensions and their locations on the property, of course. But then, you know, require each structure to be completely dimensioned in plan, or alternatively, if the structure outlined involves many offsets or jogs, the plan may, okay. Unnecessary. Let's simplify it here. And then, under the final site plan review requirements, again, the requirement to provide these, you know, positioned by dimensions, the whole language, subsection I, about dimensioning systems, that's almost a full page long, is simply not necessary. It's beyond what you would normally see in a community's site plan requirements. Any comments, suggestions about these proposed? Essentially, they're pretty much all deletions.
Must've been written by somebody that really got frustrated by a bunch of circular dimensions that were all dimensioned off itself.
I think your ordinance was written by an attorney, using probably an attorney's model, that may have been, that probably came from the city of Troy, to be honest. That would be my guess.
I mean, if there's information that's missing and we can't read it, you just go back and then tell them to put it in.
Yeah, you always have the right, as a planning commission, to be like, "hey, this is unclear to us, we need more additional information."
Yeah, more information.
You can ask for it. So that's, those are all the changes from the last time around. I don't know if you had any additional thoughts, based on if you had a chance to look at the draft more in depth from March, if you had additional thoughts for me, or changes.
I think you cleaned it up really well.
The last thing that we are looking to do, and that we would present to you the next time we meet with you, would be some language for the DTE riverfront property, maybe, just some flexible zoning language. Now, maybe your plan unit development is sufficient at this time, but I'm gonna give that some thought, and share with you some language and/or an approach for how we can tackle that. But otherwise, essentially, we've done what we said we would do for the grant, for our master plan, and so we're in good shape at this point.
So, I like this, while you were talking, of course, how does this jive with the medical campus change? If we're gonna have a public hearing on this, and we're having a public hearing on that, and that medical change is the same, the exact same paragraphs that were already changed?
Yeah, it's one of the pages that we already have on the master...
But if, I'm just a little concerned that if we put that in there, then this whole thing becomes something that doesn't get through by the end of July.
Yeah. So if we wanted to do any additional work with, like, the DTE zoning language, then we're gonna have to wait, we're not ready for a public hearing yet. So I would suggest that you just move forward with that small change to the medical campus. And then we'll have to just do another public hearing.
Keep it as tiny as possible, a little...
Yeah, that'll make it easier for them to get that. So that's all I have for you, I'll just work with Cindy and you, Wally, for the next time, that I'm ready to come before you. With some additional language.
So, do we need any motion to close out the, accept this for the...
This was just noted, you know, it was just...
Because this was just a workshop.
Called a work session, so there's no motion needed.
Do we also have any questions, Tom?
It's good.
You said, George?
Good.
Good. George. With that done, I think we're done with the, is there any other matters to be discussed by the commission? Do you have any?
I got a question. During one of our meetings for the board, a resident came in, and he was requesting, he's got chickens. And I don't know how, he's got, lives over here somewhere, he's got four chickens. He was coming, and he was requesting the board okay for him to have two more, because of the size of his family. And four chickens laying eggs for five people wasn't getting it. So I looked up the ordinance, well, the board said he had to come here, and I've never seen him show up, so I wrote his name down, though. And I looked up the ordinance, and it goes down as low as an acre, and it says you're allowed six chickens.
Yeah.
And that's what he's asking for, is six chickens, could he have two more? And they said, "well, come here, and see if this group would allow him to get two more chickens."
We already did.
Did he get them?
No, I say, we went through this one a year ago or so.
Just about a year ago, yeah.
Can he have two more chickens?
It's six.
Depends how big his yard is.
Well, it said, only, it said it went down as far as an acre. And it said, "six chickens on an acre." And I didn't know if he had less than an acre.
We changed that, I think it says, you can have, there wasn't any minimum restriction on chickens.
Oh, is that right?
I'm pretty sure we did.
Do you remember that?
I know we changed it. No roosters. Changed it twice.
Yeah, we changed it twice.
Changed it for a young lady, and then we dropped it again.
I think the second time we changed it, we got rid of the, there was no minimum for six chickens.
Well, look, when I looked up the ordinance in the township, I went home and brought it up online, and it said, "an acre, you're allowed six chickens." All I wanna know is, if I, this guy, I don't know, you know, he went through a beautiful spiel, on how chickens are economically, and good for the, good for the area and all that stuff.
Steve thinks they're a health risk, so that's...
That's, they're definitely issues with it.
So we can tell him he can have six chickens.
Whatever the ordinance was.
Whatever the ordinance was. I don't know if it says any... Are there the minutes? I don't know when we did.
What number is the ordinance that you looked up?
I don't remember.
It was, we just passed it in here, so it was the animals.
I just, I just put in, looked up the township ordinance, and I wrote in chickens, and it took me to the ordinance. And it started with like twenty acres or something like that, you could have all you wanted, and it went all the way down to one acre, and at one acre, it said you could have six.
But Cindy, you just said, "less than an acre" is four.
That's what the minutes indicate, you passed the change to be under an acre, is up to four.
So zero to an acre is four, an acre more is six.
That's what it is.
So you don't know what size lot he is on, or...
No, I don't, that's what he's asking, well, could you change that, under an acre, they're allowed six, instead of four. That's what he's asking, if he can get two more chickens. But he didn't come here, but I would, I would let him know if we changed that.
This is a very contentious subject, this is like the third time we've addressed it in a year and a half.
Chickens!
I know, the chickens are laughing at us.
I'm sure you had a reason for it. Not you personally.
I go a mile that way and buy them from somebody else that can have as many as they want.
You know, he'd be coming here with his kid, I felt, you know, I said, "just get two more chickens." I'm not gonna tell him that, you know, unless we agree that he can do that.
Because it depends on how large his property is, if he's under an acre, he can have four, if he's an acre or more, he can have six.
Well, I just won't worry about it. It says four, he said he was allowed to have four.
Okay, that must be the...
No, just forget about it.
And who's gonna go counter?
Yeah, I mean, hey, the guy came in with quite a spiel, I'll tell you.
Tracy's gonna go counter here. The lady that started this whole thing came in with a really impressive thing, she researched all the local jurisdictions and townships and cities and had...
Oh, is that right?
Oh, yeah, she had all of the different regulations for all of them and everything.
I heard a story, after he came in, I heard the story about some guy had a bunch of chickens, and some dog started chasing him, so he called the city, he called the city here about the dog, and then the guy that owned the dog got pissed and called the city about all his chickens running around. Yeah. So I said, "well, I, the guy never showed up, so I heard, I just asked."
Probably would be reluctant to change it the third time. Okay, so with that...
I didn't know I was opening up a can of worms with it.
Well, that's good, we bring you up on the history of the board.
Sure.
With that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment?
Go ahead. For a second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good.